Good evening. Welcome to the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting for Monday, December 19th, 2022. We'll start off by reading the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting Procedure. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table, so others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory, abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials are not accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such materials must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first followed by Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to the presenters' tables, state his or her or their names and addresses for the record, and explain his, her, or their request. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the chair allows the speaker additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by this recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicants. All comments are to be directed towards the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then continue its discussion on the agenda item, and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once the motion is made and seconded, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will develop findings of fact for conditional use periods, permits, and variance applications, and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45 PM. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may at its discretion continue an item that is on this floor at 10:00 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided such a meeting continuation. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment through the chair may modify these procedures prior to the meeting or an agenda item. Start off with the Planning Commission. There's no minutes to approve our old or new business, so we'll move on to the Board of Adjustment and approval of the minutes of the November 21st, 2022 meeting minutes. Do you have a motion?
The first comment was to change the heading to "from August to November." Eric did that, so... I'll make a motion then with that change to accept the minutes of the November 21st meeting.
This is Mark. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Ken, a second by Mark to approve the, not August, do it again, the November 21st, 2022 meeting minutes. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
This is Mark. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike. I vote aye. Motion approved. Minutes are approved. We move on to old business. Variance application 30-V-22 by Lori Hillmer, part of government lots nine and 10, section 1, township 145, range 32, Farden Township between Wolf, recreational development lake and Mud Lake, a natural environmental lake, parcel 07.01.02300 and 07.01.02910. Applicant is requesting the following after-the-fact variance. Part 1, section 502.2701 and 901 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for two platforms placed within the 100-foot ordinary high-water mark setback from Wolf Lake that constitutes an expansion of a non-conforming use and placement of non-vegetated ground cover in shore impact zone. Part 2, section 502.1701 and 1012 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to expand a non-conforming use by adding four RV sites located within 150 feet setback mark of Mud lake that increases the dwelling density, dwelling unit density non-conformity. And part 3, section 701 and 1012 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to request an amendment to variance 99-27 to allow second story of the garage to be used as a dwelling unit with an attached deck that constitute an expansion of a non-conforming use that increases the dwelling unit density non-conforming. Will the applicants please come forward and state their name or address for the record and then explain to the board what you're
So state my name. My name is Lori Lynn Hillmer of 32326 Wolf Lake Road. Property known as Shangri-La Resort.
Also state your name and address for the record.
Colin Hillmer. I'm currently at 4003 Celtic Lane.
Pull the microphone up close so I can speak into it, please.
All right. Colin Hillmer. My address right now is 4003 Celtic Lane, Fort Collins,
Go ahead and explain what you're asking for.
I... We're here to discuss three after-the-fact variances, and the difficulty is the fact that this property is illegally non-conforming and predates the Shoreland Management, which has been updated, I don't know, 15 times since I moved there. So, we're applied for a variance, or one had been applied for at the property. Predates, the guidelines refer mostly to residential use and not commercial resort use property, so everything we do is non-complying. And Shangri-La Resort is the only resort left on Big Wolf Lake, and after the stress of this, I understand why people quit. It's like, I mean, I didn't build a structure, I didn't... And we're passionate about what we do. Our guests leave heartwarming reviews. You know, it's not like my place is a concrete jungle like it describes. I'm so over-density. You walk there, there's green space, there's beach space. And we have done these improvements out of need, safety, and not mere wants. We're here to discuss three after-the-fact variances, which are not structures, so I didn't know we needed a variance to apply for. It's a concrete fire ring, RV sites, which are temporary. I bring in work campers this last year who helped me work, and they had brought in their RVs. And there's a garage, which we transformed into a living space and a deck out front, which everybody else got a permit that built something for me, and he said he did too, so I had no reason to check on it that it had been applied for. I mean, we built additions on. Permits were done by Neil Ramsey, by Howie Zeta, and this person said he pulled a permit, so I just trust people. So the deck is there. It's not complete because I got this notice saying, hey, stop. So it was on the docket to finish with, not green treated, but what's the composite wood this summer and a deck, and so was the rock front, but we stopped because we received this notice. This disappeared. Hold on here. Colin is my son. He helps me out, so I just need moral support. This is, it's hard to believe that I rent a resort because I'm not good at this kind of stuff. I explained each situation involved in the application, why or how it came about. I'm not here to make excuses, simply to make it right, because if I'm not here, you're going to say, nope, tear it out. And I spend too much money, time, and energy to just tear it out, and people love it. Concrete fire pits, stopped erosion from the place next door. You allowed a big place to mount, be installed, 60 feet, and the water came right my way and ran like a river. We put bushes in, we planted shrubs, and we put this concrete fire pit between five and six that's there, and it has stopped the erosion. And now you built a bigger house next door. It's beautiful. I'm excited for people when they... I'm just little and bigger is always better for me. I'm okay with a little place. What was the other thing? And I've researched neighboring variances, and they were granted, and these three requests seem reasonable compared to recent variances that were granted along our same lakeshore. I mean, they're enormous houses. Mine are just little quaint cabins, and people love it. They feel like they found, read the reviews online. They don't say it's a concrete jungle or too crowded. They're glad to get away. They're hard-working citizens, and they call it their cabin on the lake. So please work with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead.
Do you want to take each one of these individually and have the discussion on it, or can we ask questions about everything all at once? I don't know. What's the easiest way to do it?
Let's proceed with asking questions about all four, and then at the point we're done with discussion, we can decide how to go forward. Questions or comments from the board?
Well, maybe the general one, just to start. It's my understanding you have had variances or have had to do permits and stuff in the past. It's kind of curious that you proceeded to do several of these things, which are significant. I would have thought you'd be aware that almost anything you do that close to the lake, that you should at least check with Environmental Services. Do you have a good reason as to why all of these variations, violations, if you will, were performed over, I don't know, four or five years, when you probably should have known that you should have checked with Environmental Services?
I did, that was, I had the time to do the research. So that was back in 1999 and 2000 that my ex-husband had applied for those variances. My signature's not on them. The first permit I applied for was when our garage burnt down in 2006. So, and that was the structure, so I knew I needed to get a permit. And my neighbor said, hey, you're getting a permit for that because the foundation was there. We tore the existing building down, a campfire pit. I mean, the person who did it, it was just running, and he said, so I'll concrete this in for you so this doesn't happen, and never thought to get a permit. I mean, there's a space there to build a building, and it's, there's a, I learned that there's variants to build a building at that same site, so I wouldn't think, I mean, I don't mean to play dumb, because I'm not, but I just, it wasn't a structure. It wasn't a building, so I didn't get a permit. And nobody said anything, and it's been there seven years, like, hey, did you get a permit? Because Molly lives down the road who knows everything, and she'll tell me. And she said something to Greg about, hey, did you get a permit? And he said, yes. So I believed him. So it isn't, they were not buildings. The RVs are temporary. I did get a permit. I called the electric company. What do I need to do to get electric? And so I went through the permitting process. I didn't think there was anything further that needed to be done for something that's not a building. They come and they leave. They're here May 1st, and they leave September 30th. So it's not a building. I just didn't think, I thought I did my due diligence. So I'm here to make it right.
At this time, I'm going to open for public comment. Please step forward. State your name and address for the record and enter it into the log, please.
Hello? My name is Larry O'Donnell. I'm from Madison, Wisconsin, 18 Kings Mill Circle, and I am the resident that lives just to the east of Shangri-La Resort. I'll just say right off the top, of all of these variances that she's requesting, I'm in favor of. I've also been a longtime patron of the resort before I bought the cabin next door, and I can say that these improvements that I've seen with the fire rings and with the RV sites, they have enhanced the guests' enjoyment and their time spent at the resort. As far as the density calculations go with respect to the drain field, I mean, as a resident, as I walk around the neighboring facilities and houses and residents there and ride around the lake, the eye test from my perspective says that there is a lot more ground covered by some of these other residences than what I see at the resort. There seems to be a lot of open space. There's, the fire rings and the RV sites seem to be in lockstep with the Shoreline Management Ordinance. I don't see any degradation of the shoreline. I don't see any degradation of vegetation. I don't see, I see nothing that looks out of the ordinary. It looks good from that perspective. With respect to the density calculations and the size of the drain field, I understand that that's important, and I'm concerned about that, too, as a resident there. And I would like to see that, you know, there'd be some actual empirical data collected on the volume capacity of that system. And I know that the owner has agreed to install a flow meter to get empirical actual data off of that system so that it can be sized correctly. And I would like to see that done as a resident, that the system be sized according to empirical data that's collected from the peak times of the resort's operation. But other than that, I say I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Other public comment? Hearing that, I'll close public comment. Other questions or comments from the board?
This is Ken. Let me first address the platforms. The written and verbiage would appear to imply that prior to the platforms, there was a lot of disruption in the soil, runoff to the lake, et cetera. It was hard to tell when we were there in the view, fuels, as to whether that has been corrected by those platforms. Could you assure me that all water that falls on those platforms does, in fact, run off to the driveway and not to the lake?
It does. It does. They said they slanted them towards the driveway.
You've got to speak to the microphone.
The person who put them in, he worked, one worked for the city of St. Louis, and he said he slanted them towards the driveway. There's a two-inch difference from one side to the other, and there was nothing there besides bricks, or there was no vegetation. So to say we eliminated, but they do run towards the driveway, and it doesn't run like a river down to the entrance where you go, where people would enter the lake. Would you agree, Colin?
I mean, from both of them, the reason why I thought it was a great idea is because it actually was running off into the lake at first. It, like, so we were like, I thought it would be ideal to have, not have the fire pit in the soil, and then it raining, and then it running or draining towards the lake. So we actually built up, not built up, but we made it level instead of having it runoff. We made it level, and then we put the fire pit on. And then from there, it slants off. But there's actually now grass between the fire pit and the beach, and so there's no way that any runoff would run off into the beach or into the lake.
And when we didn't have a designated spot, and we had our 20 feet of beach, guess what? People grabbed rocks and started a fire on the beach. So if you give people a designated spot to have a fire, they will. But I mean, otherwise, the water would rise. We have this problem, and you can help me with this from getting, they'll try me to dump on us 18 inches of water in a day that our level goes up, and it would cover the fire pits that were, the fires that were started on the beach would be right in the lake. You know, the fluctuation on our lake can be up to 18 inches within two days.
Typically...
And if you can get the two to communicate, I commend you because I haven't been able to yet.
Okay. The, there is a part of our ordinance, not for resorts, but for residents, that allow what we call platforms, a little bit smaller than these. They have to be 20 feet back. I think one of yours is, one isn't. But more important, in order to have them that close, we usually require a mitigation. In other words, some form of vegetation somewhere on your shoreline. What is it, 500 square feet? 500 square feet? It was hard to tell when we were there in October, and clearly it is not capable now.
Right.
Do you have any area along your shoreline that could, in fact, be planted with what we'd call a buffer zone, you know, something that would maybe be about 50 feet long?
We have put a rock line in to stop erosion by the DNR.
You've got to speak to the microphone.
We put a rock line along, what, two-thirds of the shoreline to stop erosion, and we could plant plants in the rocks, but sometimes they get washed out. We have tried it.
Well, mitigation would be a vegetated, vegetated thing.
Not rocks.
You have no place where you could...
Well, on the back half of our resort, the entire roadside on Mud Lake, we have done nothing with.
That doesn't help. Wolf Lake.
Right, right. But we have, we are, I mean, we didn't cut the grass up to the edge. We just leave it natural, and that's natural vegetation. There's cattails, there's...
So you don't think you could identify...
We could go in front of six in that corner. How many feet do we need? Are you requesting?
What?
How many feet?
Well, 500 square feet, you know. Typically, we might do...
We would seek your advice on where to put it, but we'd be willing to do it.
25 by 20. Does that come out 500? Yeah.
I mean, we'd seek your advice where to put it. I mean, there's spaces that don't need to have grass, or there is no grass.
There are, already are some gardens, like, there's, we have that rock wall there, and then there are places where we did plant bushes so people don't jump over the rock wall. They go in where the beach is. So are you talking about going along that rock wall line? Does that make sense?
Back?
You basically have sand beach across your whole 400 and some feet of...
Some is rock and some is pure sand to grass.
And there's kind of a rock ledge, and then it, back behind that is grass or vegetation, if I remember.
Right. But we've worked really hard to establish that.
But there's no obvious, clear place where you could put in what we would call a buffer zone?
Cabin six on the left side.
It's hard to, I mean, I can't...
Yeah, it's hard to tell from there. But I mean, behind the rock wall, there are some places where we could put...
In front of cabin five.
Vegetation, or even, like, she said, we have a lot of gardening spots along the lake. So, I mean, and then we just cut up to that.
So it could be done. And when you say vegetation, what are the, will you tell us what native plants need to go in there?
So, okay. Without being able to see it, okay, here we go.
That is on the half that does not have the riprap.
This is right here.
And would you say two-thirds is riprap, and this is non-riprap? There's a board in there that separates.
This doesn't have any at all. The grass comes right up to the beach here.
Right.
It seems so nicely cut. Do you, do you cut it that way?
We actually pull the grass out of the beach, but it is cut.
Okay.
So you're saying let it grow in front of the cabin? We could do that for a foot, two feet? We could do that for a foot, two feet?
Other questions or comments from the board?
This is Mike.
On this topic or more other ones?
Well, I was going to ask Ken, looking at that picture, I asked Eric to pull that picture up. What do you, I'm not a vegetative expert. What do you think about doing something, no-mo zone, anything along there that would mitigate?
I can't tell what the soil is exactly, but it looks pretty sandy. You're probably not going to get much more grass than that. You'd want to put some kind of little shrubs or something. It's hard to tell. I mean, at this time of year and when we were there, it's hard to tell what direction the water flows and so on. I'm just, I do know that to allow platforms like they have, we try to do some form of mitigation someplace. I don't have a suggestion where, I can't see where, I don't know what else to tell you.
In front of the rocks, it would be very plausible because people don't step over the rocks. It would protect them here. They would trample them.
The intent of the, of the buffer is to prevent water, stormwater, to, from running into the lake. That's the intent. Your rocks you're talking about aren't going to do that.
Right. But in, on the other far half of that, it's riprap from the boat launch over up to the new house that's built. There's rocks, and we could put them in front of that. This does not, that is clear beach because it, it just washes it back. But it doesn't erode past the beach line. Where the other half actually started going back into the land near to the cabin. It's between cabins five, six, and three. We could put vegetation in front of those, in front of, between the cabin and the rocks. Because people don't step over the rocks. They go to where the dock is and step out on the dock.
What I'm looking at here, what, what's the cabin closest to it?
That's cabin one and two here and cabin, front of cabin two. But cabins.
We don't know. That's on the.
Right. The other half to the, when you're looking at the lake, to the left of the boat launch is all riprap, and we could add vegetation in there. Keep going. No. That's, and we could put some in front of, we do have one or two bushes, and they keep getting washed out by the ice. The problem is here, ice takes stuff out on the shoreline. It'll push a big sand dune up, and then we level it. The other half has rocks, and it would be plausible to put vegetation in there. I'm all for plants. I'm a plant lover.
Okay, I think we could move on.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Veronica. I have some questions for the applicant. So you have owned this property for approximately 22 years?
Yes.
And you made the comment that your husband has applied for applications, variance applications approximately nine years ago.
Back in, no, way more than, I've been divorced.
Sorry.
In 1999 and 2000, so 20 years ago.
So you're aware that applications were needed no matter what you did to your non, legal, non-conforming property?
He did all construction of buildings.
Okay. But you were aware at that time, that back in 1999 or 2000, that applications were necessary, permits were necessary.
For structures, yes.
For anything, because your property is a non-conforming legal use. So basically, anything on your property needs a permit.
That I, I mean, all we applied for were structures.
Okay. So I just wanted to comment. You made, you made notes about the neighboring properties getting, seeking variances and getting granted a variance application.
Right. Because I educated myself in the last month.
Sure. But they went the proper route. They went to the office. They saw that they could not get a permit, so they seeked a variance beforehand, not after the fact. So here, you didn't do that.
They built the house. They both built houses.
With a permit. Either way, I just wanted to clarify for you so that you understood the process here. They went the proper route, asking for the variance ahead of time before they built anything possibly.
Right. And I have a huge punishment for not doing.
You're not doing it. You did not go properly. So yeah, so now here we are trying to, trying to find ways to help you or whichever the board goes, or to deny the application because you didn't go the right channel. You didn't go to the environmental services, seek an application. Then at that time, they would have given you guidance saying, the only way you could do this is by a variance. So that's, I just wanted to give you the understanding or the explanation of what happened here, so.
I mean, it was $1,000. It's a huge fine.
Yeah. So when did the platforms get installed? What year?
I don't know, seven, eight years ago.
These fire ring platforms were installed seven or eight years ago.
That one five, like one was done two years prior, and then the other one, like seven and five years ago. So now eight and six years ago. And I mean, I had it on Facebook. Nobody said, hey, you can't do that. And I got Miss Molly down the road who knows everything. And you can't see them from the lake because they're level with the ground. They're not visible.
This is Mike. Just a point of clarification from my mind. You just talked about variance being applied for 20, 22 years ago, but did not also you apply for a variance in 2006?
No. Did it? I just, for the garage burnt down, and I got a permit. I did not apply for a variance. I just got a building permit to replace it because somebody said, hey, because we were cleaning up the structure and laying boards down, trying to figure out how to.
And that permit was for a, to rebuild a garage?
Correct. A structure that was burnt down.
And now we're here dealing with that as one of the items because there is a dwelling above it and a deck that was not allowed by the permit?
Correct. And the person who built it said they got one.
And again, while I appreciate.
The building was built first.
While I appreciate the fact that you say that someone else got the permit, it is the landowner's responsibility to make sure all permits are secured. Just, we're on the same page. You understand that, right?
I do now. I do now. Yeah. I mean, I didn't question Howie Zeta. I didn't question Neil Ramsey.
At what point did, after the garage was rebuilt, did the second floor get started being used as a dwelling?
During COVID.
And was the deck built at that time or prior to that?
Built right away.
2016. I mean, I wanted to make it an art studio. It wasn't going to be a place to live. It was, I wanted my art studio up there. I just haven't had the time to do artwork when you're raising five kids. And then I did foster care, so I just didn't have the time to do my artwork.
Mr. Chair, could I ask the applicant? In this living space that we're looking at above the garage, what's in there as far as rooms?
Furniture.
I mean, rooms, kitchens, bathroom?
There's one bedroom and a sink.
One bedroom?
There is one bedroom on the far side. And this was the, like, art, it's got, it's got a lot of furniture in that'll go on. We have a variance to build a house, and I was gifted the furniture that's upstairs.
And it has water and septic connection?
Yes, because it always had a toilet in it. The garage, they just, that's all that was there because there were guys. They just pissed in the toilet. There was always a toilet in that garage.
Go ahead, Mark.
Again, if you, if we were to allow this to exist as a rental property, how many people do you think you could house in there?
We have no intention to have it as a rental. It's specifically for my family. I have five kids, and we never built onto the house, so.
Okay, five kids and there's one bedroom in there?
Yeah, but I have, I have a house there on the property that's two bedrooms.
So one bedroom and one bath is in there?
Yep. And a living room, Mary, to just crash. When, like, my son came home from the Navy, he just slept on the couch up there.
And then to clarify again, this was built by a contractor who you thought had pulled a permit?
We built, I built the garage. The deck was built by Greg Martinson, who was.
That's the only part? I mean, the building itself?
Was built by us.
Okay.
We didn't hire a contractor, except for the electrical.
Okay. Did you obtain a permit for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then after the fact, and I mean, he had to speak to somebody down here because I wanted it to wrap around. He said, no, you can't go any closer to Mud Lake. So he had to speak to somebody. Because I go, can I even go four feet and have it be a free deck? And he said, no, they won't let you.
Okay, and clarification again. Did he, did you, and he settle on that this deck is done as far as he?
No, he never finished it. He never finished it. Just the bottom half is done and the stringers are strong. And there's plywood sitting on top. And like I said, we were ready to get the composite boards and finish. We have wires that run across the decks to finish it, to make it daycare. I mean, I'm always a daycare compliant, the best. I ran a daycare, and you want to have five grandkids running up there. I want to make sure they don't fall through.
Right. Lori, when, when this garage was permitted to be built, it was built with two levels?
Yes.
And up until, I think your thing said during COVID is when you finished it off, which is last three or four years. What was it used for before that?
Just, there's just stuff up there. I mean, we started.
Storage.
Yeah.
As the permit.
There's furniture up there. It was piled to the ceiling. Yeah. Leftover furniture that was meant to go in future cabins if people give us stuff. I'm a hoarder. We all have our problems. And I think I can use it someday, or I wonder why people left it behind.
Were, when you finished it off, you know, in the last few years, were all the windows, sliding doors, all those things in it, or were those added to?
They're all used materials, so I got them from Restore.
No, what I mean is when you had a, when that was a, when that was storage area, how did you access it? Through steps inside the garage?
Well, and the reason we put the sliding doors in so that, because the stairs, the first builder who ended up in jail, built it so you couldn't turn the corner with the furniture. So the patio doors are so that you could store stuff up. We actually had a bobcat lift it up and put it in through the patio doors. So yeah, there were patio doors.
The question is, were those patio doors there before you finished it off?
Yes.
They were?
Yes.
The patio doors were put in when the garage was built?
Yes.
How do you access that second floor?
There's a stairwell in the inside, but it curves the corner. At first, it was like this, but you hit your head as you went up, so we had to have.
Inside the garage, though? It's inside?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, Mark, go ahead. Mike, again, just looking at this, and I, I commented to the board when I was out there, the deck, aside from the fact that the railings aren't finished, so that represents to me a safety hazard with that deck being up in the air. The way the deck was framed underneath, where you see that header going across from post to post to post? Do you see what I'm talking about there? Yeah, he's got his, his cursor going across it right there.
Yep.
Okay. That in, I worked in construction when I was in the Twin Cities, and you would have never, that would have never been allowed to be built that way. I have concerns, and that's why I was asking about the amount of people. A crowd on that deck, to me, could represent a structural danger. So if nothing else, you might at some point want to have that looked at by a competent construction professional because it could be dangerous. And I, I mean, so that gives me pause right there, let alone the railing, as to what we do with it here. But it's hard for me to, to put any kind of a stamp of approval on that alone just for the way that it, I mean, normally, we don't act in code enforcement here. But when you see something in front of your face that you know is in violation, it's hard for me to say, okay, it's okay, because it's not. So anyway, aside from what we do here, I think you might want to have that looked at before you ever let any, and maybe you had people up there, but all it takes is one time.
Right. And I'm thinking about liability.
It's high enough that it could be a problem if it were to, to give way in any way. So something to think about for your own personal and family's safety.
Definitely will. Yeah.
Mark, and I could add, in addition, a deck with openings like that is totally auto.
It doesn't have, it was supposed to have wires between it, and now they make these glass frames that you can put up, which we're looking at. I mean, we're looking at a composite deck up on top.
Well, before you do that, just again, from a former building professional, I would look at how this, it's framed underneath before you do anything else. Otherwise, you're kind of throwing good money after bad potentially.
Licensed contractor will look at it.
Yep. Okay.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I just have another question about this structure here then. So in approximately 99, then, when you was, when you applied for the variance to have the second story put on, that was supposed to be strictly a garage, you said you turned it into living quarters around COVID time?
Right.
That's when you turned it into living quarters?
I think that's what it says in the write-up, if I remember.
That's when you finished it off.
2006 is when this was built. The fire was in 2006.
So from, from 2006 to the current, till two, let's say, 2019, it was strictly storage?
Starts with a bathroom in it. Yeah, there was a bathroom.
There was no living quarters. You didn't sleep in there from 2006 to let's just say 2016 for 10 years.
No.
It was strictly.
I mean, no.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, there was stuff up there. It was, it's still up there. The same furniture is still there.
Well, this, my only comment for the board is that it, it was designed to be strictly storage. I'm game with it being strictly storage and not living quarters. They only have one bedroom in it. It's not really living quarters anyway. It could be returned to strictly a garage. I'm not in support of living quarters in there.
Other questions or comments?
This is Tim. I did like your comment about those platforms being a designated area for a fire. Made sense to me to prevent random fires on the beach, like she was saying. And if they do, I don't see what harm they would do to the lake myself. But I agree with you, Veronica, on the, on the structure here. Putting it to storage.
Mark?
Yeah, Mike, Tim, to regards to your comment, I kind of feel the same way. My problem with the platforms is I didn't, I, as I looked at our, our questions that we've got to answer, I couldn't answer them positively. And that's where I struggled on those.
This is Mike. As far as the garage, it was permitted to be a garage and storage. I'm somewhat unclear about, about the bathroom that was put in, whether that was allowed or not. But I definitely think it needs to go back to storage. As far as the deck, I have issues with the deck for a couple of reasons. It's unpermitted, and here we are after the fact. But based on the construction of that deck, I think the best solution is for that deck to come down and maybe allow some kind of a stairway platform for access if it's needed, although there is access on the inside. But based on that it wasn't permitted and it's structurally, in my opinion, has issues, I have a hard time supporting that deck continuing. But I am okay with storage. The platforms, I'm in agreement with Mark. I, I don't know how we answer the questions affirmatively.
We talk about the RV?
Well, we should talk about the RV sites, too. Anybody have questions or comments on that?
Yeah. If I read everything appropriately, number three and number five are your personal use units? I thought I, number three or number five was when you used to go to moon dance. It's not rented. It's not.
No.
Okay. And number three was something I read, said that it was used to go south?
Yeah, it's already halfway there.
What?
It's halfway there. So it's gone right now.
No.
Yeah. And then we'll bring it back in the spring.
Is it hooked up to water and septic when it's sitting there?
It was.
Do you rent that unit in the summertime?
We can, or we mostly put family and friends there. There was a trailer that sat, and you can see this on. that sat, and you can see this on, I pulled up this picture when he did the septic design. We had a trailer, a two-bed, a two-bedroom trailer that sat, here's the garage. And we had a trailer that sat in front of that, and that's where the deck is here, and I mean, we took that out. We took out a two-bedroom trailer and there. So, that's where it sits.
How long was that two-bedroom trailer there? In nineteen ninety-nine?
Yeah, oh, it was there then.
Yeah, we pulled, we pulled it out after that.
It was unsafe. It just, you fell through the floor and it had mold and.
Back to my point.
Okay.
Do you rent unit three in the summertime?
We have.
You have?
Yes.
So, it's not your personal unit?
It is our personal unit, but I don't know that.
You bring it back and you connect it to your existing power, water?
The septic was from that trailer. It was already there. Yes.
It becomes a rental unit in the summertime?
We have, but it's been very few times.
No, you got to answer the question.
Yes, it has been, but it can, we can have it as personal use.
Terms of what we approve or not approve. If it was just yours and it was buttoned up and parked there and stored, that's one answer.
And that's what I would like.
If it's rented, then it's a rental unit, and it's an additional one, which is not, not allowed by your current, um, non-conforming situation.
We can keep it personal, because there were very few rentals on it.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to collect facts here.
Okay.
Okay. It does have all the hookups of electrical, water.
Because there was a mobile home unit there and it plugs, yes.
Doesn't matter, okay? Let's see, um.
Wasn't added, though.
The other questions I have, units one and two.
Yep.
They're hooked up to septic system? And you had power run to them by a power company based on the information? There's a transformer there and there's electrical hookups to unit one and two?
Correct.
Hmm?
Correct.
So, you invested in electrical hookups to make those?
They're for work campers and it's.
I, I can't distinguish a work camper from, from a rental camper or whatever. It's.
They come and work and stay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Point is, these are functioning rental units. Whether they pay money or they work it off or whatever, it doesn't matter. But you did have a power system transformers put in that, that supplied power to them. So, you have created those two new uh, living unit areas. And when did you do that?
It's in the application when I got the permit. I don't remember the year.
That's, that's not right. There was no additional transformers added.
Sir, sir.
You, you can't.
We're, we've closed public comment and, and if we, if, if the applicant requests some information, that's fine, but otherwise there is no more public comment.
Nineteen five fifteen nineteen, the, the electric, Bell-Trom electric contract.
Yeah, I have that in there.
What year was that?
Nineteen. So, those have been made permanent sites within the last three years, just like the, uh, living unit above the garage. It's a conclusion I'm coming to. Okay. And number four? That's just a parking spot?
Um, I'm willing to do away with that. It's too crowded over there. It was, we had a work camper over there, a single guy and a single gal, so it took two spots, so we put him over there and the other one. No, and I'll just have to, I heard.
No electrical hookups or anything there at all?
There's just electrical that plugs into the mobile home. It's just sharing. They only need a one-ten. They only used one-ten.
Yeah.
From the mobile home.
The point, the point is, and you, but you are asking in your application for that location four to be approved as an RV site?
I did, but I'm willing to.
Hmm?
I did, yes.
Yes.
But I'm willing to re-nig on, re- attract that.
So, I, is the, the, the application indicates your application is for four RV sites?
Correct.
Additional sites, so that's one, two, three, and four.
Correct.
Not five. You're not asking for five as an RV site? That's a storage area.
Right. That one's in storage. It's not used for.
So, overall, between the garage and sites one, two, three, and four, you're asking for five additional dwelling units for your resort? Am I?
Well, I didn't think they were dwellings, so I would, I didn't consider them dwellings because they're, they leave.
If, if, if you got water, sewer, and you rent them, they're a dwelling unit as part of your resort. I don't know how else you can look at them.
Okay. To me, they were temporary.
Temporary whatever.
Okay.
What is it? Anything over thirty days is a permanent site?
Okay. So, I can have people in there for thirty days and then they have to leave?
What?
They can be there for thirty days and then leave?
I don't know. Eric's got to answer that. I think it's, isn't it after thirty days it's considered a permanent site?
Eric speaking, that is applicable to residential use lots.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I, there's just, I can't find the definition between residential and commercial.
That's for more residential. Yeah, okay, sorry.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking. As much as I appreciate Ken's efforts in trying to, um, justify her request, um, I'm opposed to any additional dwelling units, because currently there are twelve dwelling units and, you know, on this property and adding five more dwelling units um, would just be greatly increasing the non-conforming dwelling unit density. Um, and that's contrary to our ordinance's intent. The, uh, property is already at five hundred percent over the allowed dwelling unit density, so this would be putting it at like seven hundred percent over the dwelling unit density. Um, also, all the RV sites that the applicant is requesting, um, they, uh, do not meet the hundred and four, hundred and fifty-foot ordinary high water set ma, setback from Mud Lake, and additionally, the number four does not meet the hundred-foot setback from Wolf Lake, so there are just lots of probable situations that the applicant is requesting. I'm just not in favor of the RV sites, or, uh, as mentioned, the dwelling above the garage. I could somewhat be in favor of the platforms, but the rest, parts two and three, I am opposed.
Oh, I have a question for you, Eric. Um, the staff write-up indicates that if this were a green field and you were starting over with the four hundred and eighty-some feet of, um, lakeshore and on our two acres or whatever it is, that there'd be two units allowed.
Correct.
Is that dictated by, um, Mud Lake as a national environment lake? If Mud Lake were not there, wha- what would that, what would the allowable density be that you would allow?
I'd have to calculate that, Ken. I, I didn't do that, because the ordinance requires the more restrictive lake class to be the one that we use.
Would it, wa, is your guess it might be four instead of two? You don't know.
It would be higher. How, whether it be one or two, I couldn't, I couldn't say.
I'm trying to get at is, is Mud Lake penalizing them in any way in our decision-making? Um, because they are just on what, with that one last little tiny bay of the lake, and the road probably has as much impact as anything they would do, but you, you, you can't answer the, obviously, at this point.
It would take me a little time, more than I've got right now, to, to do, run that for you.
Ken, um, this is, uh, Mike. Um, while I appreciate your, your comments about both the two different lakes and, and what's dictating here, the ordinance is clear that it goes by the more restrictive, as Eric said. Uh, and in view of the fact that this is, property's been owned by the same party for quite some time, and they have had contact in the past on different issues with environmental services, I really see that as a moot point. It, it doesn't meet criteria. I am in agreement with Veronica that, uh, no additional dwellings. I can't support any additional dwelling space, whether it be RV or above the garage. Um, and I'm still having issues with that deck itself. The, the platform, I can see how that may have helped the situation that was there, but again, I'm struggling with how to affirmatively answer the questions.
Well, this is Tim. I'd like to make a motion on the platforms and run through the findings once.
Okay. Do you want to do?
Just on the platform?
We'll do one on.
Just the platforms, yeah.
Platforms.
Fire pit.
Everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, uh, I'd be open to any condition you're thinking of.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to, uh, approve leaving them, uh, existing cement platforms in their place. Um, number one, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? I believe a designated platform for a fire pit containing the ash eliminates any need for beach fires or, so it's helping the lake. Um, number two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by official controls? I'd say yes. A lakeside fire pit is a reasonable use for customers for a resort with a flat, hard surface to sit on. Uh, number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current prior property owners? Well, this is a legal, non-conforming resort with customers wanting to sit by the lake and gather with a fire. So, maybe we would have wanted them adjusted here or there, but they're kind of right there anyway, so. Uh, number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character? I think lakeside, uh, recreation alongside, um, a fire pit is all happening all up and down the shoreline. And I'll adopt, uh, staff's number five.
Are you making a motion? That was a motion.
That was a motion.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll second that. I would like to have some discussion over a condition for some mitigation, if possible.
Okay.
And I'm open, I'm open to add that to my motion if somebody would describe that.
Well, it's, it's, maybe it's a discussion to have. It would be nice, at least for the width of the fire pits, say twenty-five feet, to have some kind of buffer, but it's not obvious that with them having built the pits, ashes are one of the worst pollutants there are to the lake. Besides animal deficit, but, um, it's not obvious there was runoff of them to the lake. So, if, if, if we can't come up with a good description for a buffer, I'd be willing to just forget about that, that mitigation. I'd like to see it, but I, the alternative is to, is to put the condition that the environmental services go out and approve a, a buffer that's at least twenty-five by five feet or something like that, and I think the, the time and effort and significance of that is probably not a big issue, so.
Okay.
But I'm open that if other, however, how other ones feel, whether we should force some kind of mitigation or not, uh, and I'm willing to go either way.
Veronica?
Uh, this is Veronica. I would be inclined to maybe seeing some type of vegetation screening from the lake as well, the entire width of the platform, if you're going to go that route.
I could try to describe what we'd want, but environmental services would have to eventually approve it if you want. Adam, Mark, what do you think?
Um, this is Mark. Uh, would you, Eric, need to approve anything that we describe or?
My preference is that the board spell out exactly what it wants, then it doesn't put this department in an awkward place.
Right. So, Ken, we'd, we'd have to describe what we want out there.
And, and not being able to see exactly what's there and pace it off other than saying, you know, you know, I could name you some shrubs, some low-growing shrubs, twenty-five feet by five feet, but I'm not, I'm not sure that effort is worth making that happen, so.
This is, uh, Mike. I guess, um, I, I think we're treading into a ground that we're, we're not going to be able to define anything enough to, to make it, uh, enforceable or doable. What I would suggest is that it, at a minimum, be maintained, the grass be maintained between those platforms and the sand beach, and that it not be diminished in, in any way from where it's currently at.
So, your suggestion, the condition is that the gla, grass, no more grass, if you will, uh, be maintained in current condition?
Oh, I'm not even saying no more. I'm saying that the grass cover be maintained in its current condition.
And that's a challenge, because we replant every year to keep it.
Okay.
So, we have a motion. And we have a second. Have we agreed to a condition?
Um, I think what you just said is that the, um.
Do you understand the condition that's being proposed is that you would have to maintain that grass vegetation?
Yes.
Every year?
Yeah, and we have plugs to it. You know, you can't tear it up or some, like some sections we have to add saw and dig it. So, I'm okay with that.
Okay, we'll add that condition.
The sand and the.
We have a motion by Timothy, a second by Ken, to approve the platforms with the condition that the current grass be maintained between these platforms and the beach. And that we found fa, findings of fact, so we will vote on this motion. Timothy, how do you vote?
This Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Mark, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike. I vote aye. Motion carries for the platforms. We now have both the, uh, RV sites and the garage.
And the deck.
And the deck. Is anyone ready to make a motion? This is Mike. I'll make the motion that we deny the applicant's uh, request for the four additional RV sites and the dwelling unit above the garage. The garage needs to be converted to just storage, and the deck removed would be my motion. And the findings of fact, um, I will accept the staff's findings of fact on that.
Probably got to adjust them, because it, the findings of fact
Yeah.
deal with the, um, uh, pit, fire pit platforms also, so you might have to line out some of those, I think.
So, is the variance in harmony with general purposes and intent of the fishing, uh, official controls? No. Uh, strike the first sentence concerning the first two sentences, or the first sentence, the two platforms totaling four hundred and eighty-four square feet up into the ordinary high water setback be struck, and then retain the re, remainder of that. Number two is the property owner proposing the use of the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control? No. And again, strike all language concerning the concrete pat, platforms and retain the rest. Number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior owners? No, and we can accept that one, I believe, as written.
It was Mike, Eric speaking. There is a sentence midway that addresses the platforms.
Okay, then strike the portion midway through that addresses the, uh, platforms on number three. On number four, again, strike, it's, the answer is no. And strike those portions contain, that portion of that which pertains to the platforms. And maintain five as, as yes. So, we have a. yes. So, we have a motion by myself, findings of fact.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
We have a second by Veronica. So, the motion by Mike, second by Veronica, with findings of fact, to deny the application for the dwelling above the garage, and that needs to be maintained as strictly storage, and so denying any dwelling unit, denying the four RVs, additional RV sites, and that the deck must be removed. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
This is Mark, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
Mike, I vote aye. The motion carries. The dwellings, RV sites, and platform are denied. Thank you.
So, do we have an appeal process that we can follow after this?
You can talk to the environmental services office on, on what your options are at this point.
Okay.
And this is Veronica speaking also. Eric, does she still need to get approval from the Mississippi Headwaters Board for what we did approve? So, you're still not in the clear yet.
Next, we'll move on to new business. Variance application forty-v dash two-two by Norris Hirsch, part of government lot five, section twenty-two, township one forty-one, range thirty-three, Mantrap Township on Coon Lake, a natural environmental lake, parcels two zero point two-two point zero one four zero zero and two zero point two-two zero two zero three one. Applicant is requesting a variance from section four of the subdivision ordinance to subdivide property within five years of a previous administrative subdivision. Please state your name and address for the record, and then explain what's being asked.
This is Kevin Lindo of Lindo Surveying and Mapping, seventeen four ninety-five, county thirteen, Nevis, Minnesota, as authorized agent on behalf of the applicant. And what is being asked is a variance from section four of the subdivision ordinance because of the five-year waiting period that's required to submit a subdivision application, if an application has been submitted within the last five years. Just a brief history on that, in two thousand eighteen, there was an application submitted for the subject parcel to attach roughly a hundred feet in width on the west side of the property to what was then an adjoining one-hundred-foot parcel that was purchased by the applicant at that time. Then in, fast forward to two thousand twenty, the applicant purchased the hundred-foot parcel on the east side, which was a county tax-forfeited parcel, and in order to make that a conforming parcel of two hundred feet in width for a riparian parcel, they have decided to attach an additional hundred feet to that parcel. The reason we're here is because five years hasn't passed since two thousand eighteen, when the last application was, was done.
Thank you. Eric, it's my understanding that if this were to have waited approximately less than a year, it could have been done administratively by your office, and with that in mind, I guess I see no issues with this particular proposal, other than the timeframe. Other questions or comments from the board?
Everything seems to be.
At this time, I'll open for public comment.
I, I can comment.
Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and also enter into the log your name and address.
Name is Jenny Optal. Address is four ten Trilane Drive in Norwood Young America, zip is five five three nine seven there. Um, it is, the property is my, my dad. Oh, he didn't have to get up and come. He can't hear what's going on.
That's fine.
So, yes, the property going into my parents, the left side, there was an adjoining property, and my brother purchased that and added to it to make it so he would eventually be able to build the house, and where my dad purchased this DNR tax forfeiture piece on the opposite side that we're trying to add the extra footage to, to make sure that it's a complying lot in the future, so I won't have to have any variances in the future. So, I don't know if I can help answer any other questions other than that.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
So, Mike, just to clarify, we're not getting public comment here. These are the applicants. Is, is that correct?
Sorry, yes, this is my dad who has the property and.
Okay, okay.
Kevin came to help us.
Just for the record, I just wanted to.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay.
Now, yeah, now it has become apparent that it is part of the applicant, so that's fine.
My apologies, I'm.
That's okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. We appreciate your comments. Any other public, or any public comment? Hearing none, I'll close public comment. Other questions or comments from the board?
No, this is Veronica speaking. I, I agree, as you already commented, that this could be done next December, but there's nothing really holding them back, and plus, this proposal will make that parcel twenty point two-two point zero two zero three one a conforming lot by increasing its width, so I'm in favor as well.
Other questions or comment, or is someone ready, ready to make a motion? Mark?
Mike, I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve this application and accept the staff's findings of facts.
This is Tim, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mark, a second by Timothy, to approve the application and accept the staff findings of fact. Timothy, how do you vote?
This Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Mark, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike, I vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I tried to buy that in nineteen eighty-eight. Then there was too much grassland, lake property. Well, then it came up now, and I could put a bid on it and buy it.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Good things come to those who wait.
Patience. Okay, next we'll move on to variance application forty-one dash V dash two-two by William and Christine Winkler, outlot two, Minnago Beach, section one, township one forty, range thirty-three, Nevis Township on Eighth Prowing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcels twenty-one point four five point zero one two zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from sections one zero zero one and one zero zero three of the shoreline management ordinance and section four subdivision eight point three and subdivision eight point one point C point five of the subdivision ordinance to subdivide a platted lot by administrative subdivision rather than by a subsequent plat and exceed the requirement that a maximum of four lots within a government lot can be set aside in public. Please state your name and addresses for the record, and then explain what you're asking for.
Doug Winkler.
Your address?
Huh?
Address.
Twenty-seven eight twenty-nine, Far North Drive, Nevis.
Christine Winkler, two-seven eight two-nine, Far North Drive. What are we asking? We're asking to split our outlot in two so that each of our children can have one of the two sides, and my daughter is interested in building on one of the parcels.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Just Ken, outlot, on this drawing, outlot one to the left, outlot to the right, you do not own those, right?
Correct. We only own outlet number two.
Okay. Eric, for the record, they meet all the requirements size-wise, et cetera, for administrative lots?
Eric speaking, yes, both proposed lots meet minimum lot, minimum lot size and width requirements.
Okay.
This time, I'll open for public comment. Hearing none, I will close public comment. Other questions or comments, or is someone ready, ready to make a motion?
Mike, I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve this application and accept the staff's findings of fact.
This is Timothy, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mark, a second by Timothy, to approve the application, accept the staff's findings of fact. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Mark, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike, I vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now move on to miscellaneous communications.
Yeah, Eric speaking, all I've really got is in regard to possibly what next month's agenda looks like. We don't have any applications officially submitted as of yet, but the deadline to do so is the twenty-seventh, so we typically don't see things until the day of the deadline. And there are two or three different tabled applications that we might receive information on in time for inclusion on January. I don't know. I'm, I wouldn't think the odds of that are high, but it could happen.
Thank you. And for the record, I will not be at the January meeting.
The one that may not occur, you mean?
May or may not occur. And then I, also, I believe that January, we have elections for that.
Tim won't be here in January.
I won't be here.
And Timothy also won't be here, so it's imperative if we, Eric drums up any business, that three of you show up. Leaves Tim and I somewhat vulnerable though, doesn't it? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair, vice chair.
This is Mike, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
This is Ken, I'll second it.
Motion by Mark, second by Ken, to adjourn. Timothy, how do you vote?
Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Mark, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
Mike, I vote aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.